Should we get going? Convening today's meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have a quorum with Kathleen and myself and as many of you know, our first selectman suffered a mild stroke, I think, as he described it to me. He's in the hospital now and hopefully getting better. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and them and his family. It's a hell of a job being for a selectman of any town, particularly in this environment. So I, you know, obviously again, our thoughts and prayers are with Kevin. Get better. He's, I think, done a terrific job as first selectman and want him to continue in that role going forward. So we move to the agenda. The first item is minutes. Approval of the regular meeting held on April 5th. I had no changes, Cath. Do you have any?
No changes.
No changes.
Also, I just want to share, we wish Kevin good health and I know he's on the mend. He's probably watching us now, so.
I hope not. For sake. Kevin, turn off the TV. Just, we'll get, we'll get through this. I move to approve the minutes for April 5th.
Second.
All in favor? The eyes have it. Public comments. Members of the public are always welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. You can submit comments electronically. They should be sent to bosdistribution@newcanonct.gov. Any comments, Tucker? Okay. You can continue to say, you can send those through the meeting and we will acknowledge them. Facility lease agreement. Review and recommend to Town Council a facility lease agreement between the town of New Canaan and New Canaan YMCA regarding the use of Kiwanis Park, Mr. Director. How are you?
I'm good. Very good.
Good morning, John Howe. What's that?
I would have rather not had wind last night.
What were the wind? As I was leaving my house this morning, branches all over my driveway. What was the top speed?
You know, I honestly don't know.
Somebody said 50 miles an hour.
Wouldn't surprise me by the amount of stuff that's down, you know, little, little branches here and there, but like Lapham Road is closed with power lines and
It is.
I know the highway is running all over the place.
That's good to, good to be able to tell people that. So what do we, what have we got here?
Okay. It's very similar at least to what they've done in the past. It's a two-year lease that we're looking for with the first year being $10,000 rent and then next year, the following year, we go to $15,000. Reason we're going to two years is we're trying to, so we don't have to go back to the Town Council every single year with a new lease. I met with the Y, with the director and with Davey who runs their program down there and they're happy with it. Basically, the lease is the same as it has been in the past, except the change in money for the following year.
So it was, it was 10,000 last year as well?
It's been 10,000 since, I believe, 2017.
Okay.
Okay.
Any changes in programming?
For, for the Y themselves? I don't believe so. They still run all their own programs. It's some, this is for their, their Y camp, so we're not involved in any of their programs. We're changing some of our programs. We're going to try to do some more things down there. Get some life back into Kiwanis, so.
Just had a couple of other questions. So I think that the limit is 170 kids, is that right?
170 kids. That's what they had last year.
And that was same. Okay. Is that COVID related or is that just a number that we've used in the past?
Yeah. No, that's a number we've used in the past. Years ago, it was 140.
It was.
Yeah. And that's where I'm not sure if that was COVID related or that was just an old number.
Okay. All right. Great. And then there's just this reference to the Kiwanis Park House. And I'm just noting that they can use the year-round storage, no additional charge. And it says, provided that the YMCA at their expense corrects any health and building code violations and obtains a CO from the town's building official prior to commencing any demolition or construction work.
There was, that stayed in there from last year's lease and that was mainly when the first year that they used it. And it's, there, there was some work that needed to be done.
Okay.
So that's why we left it in there since they're taking it over just to protect us.
But are we giving them the, the right, obviously they have to still go through the building official, but just a demolition of the, is that?
There, there was some ceiling work that had to come down, so it was considered demolition.
But not demolition of the entire structure?
No. No, definitely not. And this year, we don't anticipate any demolition.
Or construction?
Yeah. We, I walked it yesterday with them.
Okay.
And it's in good shape. So, you know, it's not like there's any water pouring in or anything like that, so.
All right. Good. Thank you.
What are the, long-term, and see Tiger's back there, I mean, in terms of what we may, they need to do at Kiwanis to keep up infrastructure, new roof, new this, new that?
At Kiwanis Park itself, like, I know one, one of the sheds needs to either be rebuilt or at least re-roofed, things like that. Overall, the place isn't, isn't in horrendous shape. We're not doing it this spring, but I'd like to restain the main building as you come in. And, and it's minor repairs like that. Truly haven't walked through the whole place to say, okay, we need to do this to this building, this to the gazebo, that type of stuff. But there, there is some definite upkeep, but nothing major.
And you, you mentioned an expansion programming on the town side, not the YMCA side. Potentially, what, what types of things are you thinking about, John?
Mainly Steve Dayton has been doing a lot of work trying, trying to figure out some different things. Anything from having a movie there to possibly doing more water-type programs, you know, just, just Kiwanis works great for the little kids because they can walk in and out of the sand and they have all that sensory stuff they could do with sand. So, and then they kind of gravitate towards the pool as they get older. So.
And there's, as I recall, there's umbrellas there now, right? We've had them for a number of years.
Umbrellas there to give a little bit of shade in there.
When do they get posts put up?
They'll be put up, we don't open until Memorial Day, that timeframe. So we still have to have it pumped down. New sand brought in, graded out, do, do all that.
Is the pool going to open up same time?
Yeah. Well, they, they open up basically at the same time, yes. Where, pool cover's coming off today, so that's exciting.
It is.
It's a little cold.
It's a little cold, but.
It's the sun of spring and summer.
Actually had the pool running for the last couple of weeks, which is normal. As it gets warmer, we have to get it going and start injecting some chlorine and filter in the water and everything, so.
That's great. I have no further questions. Kathleen, do you?
No.
Do you want to move this?
I'll, I'll move that we agree to the facility lease agreement between the town and the New Canaan YMCA regarding the use of Kiwanis Park.
Second here. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tiger. Vine Cottage. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Let's see if I can, Bill. You were in the. And I know this is an issue that's near and dear to Selectmen Corvitz's heart. This is approval, approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into contracts with AW Construction for a quote, "not to exceed" quote, "cost of $20,000 to perform exterior repairs at the Vine Cottage and with Aladdin Services LLC for $34,000 plus a contingency of $3,400 for a total project cost of $37,400 for exterior painting of the Vine Cottage." Hurrah.
Okay. So we have a two-piece phasing project here. We're going to have AW Construction work with Aladdin Services for this particular project. There's some wood rot over there and some water damage on the outside of buildings, we all can see. So the plan here is Aladdin's going to come in and then they're going to strip one side of the building at a time.
Aladdin or?
Aladdin Service. They'll strip the paint off to their thing according to EPA regulations. And as they're doing that, they'll, whenever they discover that needs to be repaired, AW will come in and make those repairs.
So the painters come in first?
They'll come in.
Scrape?
They'll scrape one side of the building.
And then they'll see?
They'll move the other side.
And if next, stuff needs to be done, you bring in.
They'll fix up.
AW.
They'll repair. Reason why we're doing it that way is because there's some unknowns there and we're gonna, you know, not one to call a can of worms, but you never know, right? You're gonna get in there, we noticed some stuff that's high that we can't really see. See there's some.
So, so I've got to ask though, I think, if, we've got a "not to exceed" quote-unquote
20,000.
Provision. What, what happens if the unknown, unknowns, whatever?
Come back and visit you.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. You know, we were trying to, that's why we did a "not to exceed" on that because there's some unknowns over there. There's a lot of shrubs that are in the way and what have you. We really got to get into it. It's just the best way to do it. Aladdin Services were able to handle some of the wood repairs, but when we discussed this with him, the nature of the building and what's involved, he's, they're a painting company. I said, let's get some professional carpenters involved when there's a problem, so it gets done right. So that, that's, we have some work to do on the porches and whatnot and that's, and that's a high-traffic area. So we want to make sure all the carpeting work is done correctly and code compliant, so. And then the painting company, Aladdin Services, they've been great. They've been our painting contractor on several projects, more than actually quite a few projects.
And this is going to have no impact on our day-to-day operations of the Health Department.
Well, it depends how you look at that. I'm going to move them out.
You are going to move them?
I'm going to put them up to Irwin for probably about three weeks, you know, weather permitting. For a couple of reasons. One, because there's, there's, there's lead stuff we have to deal with. We have to shut down the air conditioning system and we have a young, young people over there. We don't want no problems if they decide to have children or whatever with the lead and all that stuff. So we just said, you know something, let's get them out. We're going to move what they need to operate up there. We're not going to empty the whole building out. If we need to get in to get paperwork, whatever, we can do that certainly. But the safe thing is let's just get them out of the way and let our guys not to worry about them. Let's go.
Is there anything interior, on the interior side, now that if they're out for three weeks, that might need to be done at the same time?
Well, I did, well.
Why not? Yeah.
While, while you're at it.
Take advantage of the three weeks.
Listen, there's always, we, we went over this when we had the original project about, you know, ripping all the old carpeting, still in there, replacing all the carpeting and painting all the walls and fixing a lot of other stuff inside. And this gets right into that big program that we originally had that got, didn't approve.
But that was making ADA compliant, as I recall.
There was a lot of elements in there, not only compliance issues at that time, but the windows need to be reworked and all that type of stuff, so.
Should be considered. Think about it.
We, we will look at it. It's, you know, not emptying the whole inside. I'd have to see what we can do and then find some funding for it. Right now, what, this is contingent of funding from the Board of Finance.
Was this, was it, was it?
It's supposed to be contingent.
Was this in the budget?
It's not. It's not. It's contingent of transferring funds. Board of Finance has to transfer funds. We were able to find some projects that we completed and some other ones that are actually had to be put on hold. So we're able to, hopefully they'll let us transfer a fund, create a new project and then not have to ask for any kind of special appropriation, just transfer the money that we actually have.
Two questions. One, the, the color of the paint, are we going to follow the original color that's been up there? No changes there?
I'm not going to change colors. You know, I think it's been that for a hundred years.
Yeah.
No one complains about it.
Okay. Just want to confirm that. And what was my other question? Timeline. What are we expecting in terms of start and finish? In terms, I know three weeks, but when?
Probably three weeks. Well, um, if we get everything, once we get everything approved and we get a contract signed, I'll, I'll talk to them and see if we have a spring project or if it's going to be more in the summer. I asked them to tentatively just schedule a date for me, but I haven't heard back from them. So he gave me some ideas, so I don't have the full answer yet. And unfortunately, you know, everything is weather, conditions of weather. We've had projects before that got stalled up to three weeks because it's a domino effect, right? If he's working on a house down the street and they get a rain for a week, well, now I'm pushed off week two. So they may have a crew come in and prep and get things going and then they may stop until their other crew catches up to them. Well, we'll, we'll figure it out. We're just going to try to get it done as soon as we can, get it behind us.
And, and the, the proposed fees, they're pretty similar to what you saw last November when you got sort of a broad range?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yes.
I mean, they didn't increase or anything?
It went a couple thousand dollars, I believe. But we really dug into it and we did go out for a public bid on it and we did receive another contractor bid. It was very high. It's, it's a tough one to get contractors. I, I sent it out not only to a bunch of painting contractors, but I also sent it to Sherwin-Williams, our representative over there, who I work with, to have him send it out to who he felt would be qualified job. And it's just, it's difficult. No one, no one wants to bid work. I guess, I guess law houses be painted, just go and just dome and they, don't want to get into this process, I guess.
Well, I'll be happy when it's started and completed. So thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
And I agree with Kathleen. I think to the extent that maybe some things can get done interior-wise in terms of carpeting or.
I could do it. I will do it. Trust me, I will.
Yeah. Not, not windows or roof or, you know, major construction, but I just.
So I'm in. I'm going to try to get as much as I can done because I don't get the opportunity to get it in that often. So we're, we're going to look at it and see where we are with our budgets. It's been a rough year, as you all know. But I'll work it out and Tiger and I will discuss things that we possibly can do.
Great.
Good to get in.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I would move to approve the aforementioned request for repairs, exterior, potentially interior going forward, repairs at Vine Cottage as well as exterior painting for a total project cost of $37,400. Do you have a second?
Second. And that's for one, right?
Right. Yeah. So let's make a fraction.
Right. Two approvals. Yeah.
So one was for 20,000, right? And then the other one was 37,400. So.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, Bill. Note on that, that it is contingent of funds being transferred. Just wanted to make sure we know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not in the budget.
When do you seek that?
Once Board of Finance.
Next quarter financing.
Next week?
Okay.
Next quarter financing.
It's on their calendar.
By the way, build it. Is it, is a typo in the definition of permitted hours in the agreement? It should say to 5:30 PM, just as a. On the, yeah, on the Kiwanis.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nick, Russ Kimes couldn't be here this morning. Last minute, you said he left your voice on?
He did. He did. So I guess we're just going to table that for going forward.
You don't want to go through the approval? Do we know enough about it?
Um. It was in the budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can move with that. So Russ Kimes, Emergency Operations Chief, has, and I think this is something that they've been requesting for a while.
We've talked about it.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
This is adding to an existing.
Right. We have a number of portable generators. We need more. The request is for eight new portable generators. This would involve a approval of a request from the OEM to enter into a contract with Stanford Motorsports in the amount of $10,392 for the purchase of those eight portable generators. I think, given the, the weather we had last night, that Lapham Road is closed, you know, that just shows the importance of having portable generators. These are in the budget or were in the budget. And so, do you have any questions?
I just have one question that maybe Tiger, you might, sorry to ask you this. The eight portable generators from Office of Emergency Management, would you expect those to be stored where? You know?
We're either going to store them at the Highway Department or the Firehouse.
Firehouse or the Highway Department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they need to be exercised. So right now, we're working that, most likely be at the Firehouse or there.
How much do those weigh?
They're very, they're very lightweight. They're like the high generators.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's the size of, so they're, they're about the size of a small suitcase. They're not very heavy at all. They would be manageable by, you know, an elderly resident, they would be manageable.
So they're, they're for use of if someone is on oxygen or what have you and they need to have their, their power?
We're, we're, EverSource has a similar program for people who are at the or at risk, similar to that. What we were seeing is we were going to, going out of well visits, were to people that we knew were elderly or infirm, going there and seeing that they had lights out, no power, sitting on their porches in the cold.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily the way we want to see or treat our elderly. So our feeling was that we could bring some to the residents that we knew were at risk that might necessarily need a breather or whatever, first month, maybe a life savings account. These apparatus that they have in their house, or just to have light bulb on and maybe their heat or, or their refrigerator. So we'll, we'll do the whole house, but at least make it happen.
Sure. Okay. Appreciate that.
And would that, would those requests go through Leon or Health Department or?
They go through the EOC and then come up there with, with Health and Services.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Want to move that?
I'll make a motion to approve a request from the Office of Emergency Management to enter in a contract with Stanford Motorsports in the amount of $10,392 for the purchase of eight portable generators.
Second motion?
All those in favor, say aye.
I think that passes. Tree Warden. Tiger's coming up. Approval of a request from the Tree Warden to enter into a contract with Mill River Tree Services for $20,585. The project entails the removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town. And I assume Tiger, this is part, this is part and parcel of our budget?
It is part and parcel of our budget. Good morning.
Morning.
Just to give you an update, as you were asking about EverSource, at about 15 minutes ago, we had 45, 45 customers out of service out of the 8,595 serviced by EverSource, which is about 0.52%. And statewide, there was 5,200 people out, or 5,200 customers out, out of their 1.2 million. So other towns are doing a little bit worse than us. In the area, Stanford's got like 1,000, you know, out at present. But, so we have several, we got a couple of roads blocked. Any road that was blocked by trees has been taken care of. Anything that's got trees and wires, we have to wait for EverSource. But we have, I think, two right now that are blocked, but they're passable, meaning.
Well, we, we mentioned Lapham. So what's the other one?
Lapham was one and then, uh, Pone's at Davenport Ridge, but you can get through on Skyview Lane. So you can get through to either side. So this bid was our, our, our April bid, so to speak, from the Tree Warden. It had eight, six separate locations on it. We only received one bid from Mill River Tree, but Mill River's always given us a very comprehensive and competitive bid for $20,585. The Tree Warden is comfortable with the number and we'd like to go forward with, with that work.
Just one question, Tiger. So as we approach the end of the fiscal year, do you have a sense of where we are budget-wise in terms of what's the remainder?
We have very little left.
Very little left.
Very little left, yeah. So that, this year, we had asked for about an additional $95,000 in the budget for this specific purpose, whereby we get into May and June and we're basically scraping everything together to try to be able to get one more bid out. We don't want to be in that situation whereby we know that we have issues that we need to take care of. We want to be able to take care of them. That's why we increased our budget and thankfully, the town fathers said yes.
So is this the last tranche?
I think we'll have one more at that. What, what we wind up doing is we have money set aside and emerged for, set aside for emergencies. We start to peel those monies back as the, as the days go forward. We start to peel the, those monies back to then be able to create one more. But we're, uh, we're, we're, we're at, we're at our limit. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
We won't let a, if it was a hazardous tree, we're not going to let it sit, you know? Let's put it that way. If it's something that has to be taken care of, we will take care of it immediately, regardless of budget. We'll find that money. But as far as a targeted bid, we might have to necessarily wait for July 1st.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I will move this, move to approve a request from the Tree Warden to enter into a contract with Mill River Tree Services for $20,585. Project entails the removal, pruning and stump removal of various trees in town. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Tiger, while we have you? Can you just, you know, this is, at this time of year, is it getting nicer outside? People start to look at the roads and you and I have gotten some of the emails and as Kathleen has to.
Well, it's a good question. So the, so you, you, you approve?
If you could just explain to people the timing and why, you know, for Park, whether it's Park Street or Church Street or other, you know, what?
Sure.
The, the deal with EverSource.
So sure. So the, uh, this year, we're going to be taking care of, because of what, we had a three-year memorandum of understanding at EverSource to give them three years to upgrade services, right? Install the main and upgrade services or install services. That was technically 18, 19, 20 for any road that was started in 2018, which is everything from Farm Road to Oak Street on both sides of South Avenue. So that block of roads. But due to COVID in 2020, they didn't have any sales force, so we gave them 2021 to, uh, try to get as many people on. And believe it or not, we've had a slew of, of call before he digs or service requests come in now because oil prices are spiking. So people are now coming off the fence, so to speak. They were on the fences to whether or not they should convert. Now with oil prices rising, gas prices staying a little bit lower, they're starting to say, no, I want to, you know, it's, it's, it's a more cost-effective for me to go over to gas. We've seen a rise, even on the roads that we're looking to pave this year, we're seeing a rise in those service requests. So we're looking at working with EverSource. They will, they will reimburse the town for the expenses ensued and we'll be looking at putting those roads out for a late summer, early fall construction. Because now that we have this slew of services, I want to get the services in before we obviously go and repave. And then anything that was done in 2019, which would be from Oak Street into town and then Park Street and a couple of other outlying roads themselves, those will be done in 2023 because you had 19, 20, 21, give them the one year for COVID-22 and then we'll be in 23 for a repave. We already put our list of roads out. The contractor has a couple of sidewalks he has to do first on Mead Street. Once he finishes those, he's going to come in and comprehensively take care of our paving list, plus Brinkerhoff Mortimer and Lockwood, which was delayed from last year because of water service, Aquarian Waterline that went in. And then we have a couple of roads that are, will be delayed only because Aquarians coming in and rightly so. Now that there's a gas main and they want to come in and put water service as well or upgrade the water service. So that's Whitney, Leslie, Park Place, Farady, Millport Avenue, Olmsted Court and a couple of others that are Elms, Upper, Upper Elm Street. Those will come in this year and they'll take care of that work. And then we'll look to repave either at the end of the season or next year, depending on timing at that point. And we just started the bump outs here yesterday. So those are, those will proceed for about the next three weeks or so, trying to take away a couple of businesses at a time and then work our way through the, through that process. And I think, I think that does it, we have, we'll have, bring one more contract to you for crack sealing, microthin overlay and cape seal. We're working through pricing right now for those. And there's a long list of roads that will be.
That's part of the PMP.
That's part of our pavement management improvement program. Yeah, those are roads that are outside what have been, what would have been affected by EverSource or Aquarian at present. So those are all outside, but we have a long list of roads that, that'll be taken care of there as well.
Okay.
That's a, you know, those are at their 10-year mark. So at their 10-year mark, they get a cape seal or a microthin overlay at that point. And then if they're at their five-year mark or 15-year mark, they get crack sealed. So those are the roads that are on that list.
But, you know, the bottom line is for all of those roads impacted by the natural gas, they're going to be paid for by
EverSource.
EverSource. And the deal is, you know, the deal was three years because it gives people time to tie in to the gas. You, you don't want to be pave a road and then have somebody tie in and.
That usually happens, yeah. So we don't, you know, we don't want to see that happen whereby at the moment we pave it, somebody comes in for a service installation, you know, a utility cut, which, uh, which kind of defeats the purpose. So yes, we had to give them enough time to reach their, what, what they consider their saturation mark, right? Which is the, you know, they have to get to a certain mark of how many residents or how many customers they can convert.
So suffice to say, there's going to be a heck of a lot of paving going on this summer.
It'll be very busy.
Weather permitting. So, thank you, Tiger.
No problem. You're welcome.
Tax overpayments. Approval of refunds of tax overpayments. I have no comments.
Move it?
My second.
All in favor?
Approved. Contracts, review of, this is not something we vote on. It's just a review of contracts for $10,000 and under.
I think John Howe actually covered all these. These are all dealing with getting ready for summer camp, the t-shirts, cleaning up the pools and painting, Steve Banko pools. So lifeguard apparel, all seems reasonable. It's a great
Playground medic.
Start of the summer.
It's a good, it's good. I move to approve, I'm sorry, we're not approving that. Legal fees. Let's. Yeah, no, I've got it here.
I just had one question, just as we, again, same question I had for Tiger on the trees, but, and Tucker, maybe you know this, but as we are getting closer to the last quarter of our fiscal year, seems like we're, we're running just fine. It doesn't seem like we're going to exceed the budgeted amount of 300,000. Any, any things that might not be seeing for the fourth quarter?
No, nothing that we can see right now.
Okay. Okay. And I did note, obviously, there, we do have um, in addition to our retainer, I guess the largest amount we have year to date in fees is for um, the eight thirty G application for seven fifty-one weed street. It just, I saw there's additional fees obviously related to the filing for the moratorium. Has that gone in yet?
Yes, that is down in the town clerk's office. It was down there as of April seventh. It has to sit there for twenty days for the public to be able to come and review it. Once the twenty-eight, so on April twenty-eighth, it will then be submitted to the state, providing there's no um, petition or anything filed from any residence.
So April twenty-eighth and it's sitting in the, in the town clerk's office and that's been publicly noticed then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, and I think that um, the other large items are some P and Z appeals and uh, the ethics board issue. Um, so you, you want to move to approve the
Yeah, uh, make a motion to approve the uh, legal bills submitted to the selectmen.
Second here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen's comments.
So I actually, um, Tiger, if you, if you want to just speak into the mic there, that'd be great. I, I had mentioned this already. There, Easter morning, there was an accident. I don't know the, the uh, extent of its severity at the intersection of Carter one oh six and Canoe. And I know that I've reached out to you and, and deputy chief, uh, De Federico for details and, but just also maybe you can comment. We haven't gotten the details yet, but just where we stand in terms of the proposal of the safety measures with the state and even locally.
Okay.
For this particular intersection.
Right. So, yeah, we, as, as, as mentioned previously, we had a traffic study done. And three alternatives were uh, presented. We're reviewing those alternatives and then have to sit with the state to see what's palatable with the state. As far as the accident, I spoke to the deputy chief last night. He's waiting for the accident report at that point in time. We'll review it. We'll send it to our traffic consultant. So he's aware of what the, what possibly were the mitigating factors for it. And if they can be uh, they can be taken care of or addressed quickly, we'll take care of those. If it was a sightline issue, if we've got, you know, say now that spring has sprung, we get, you know, some tree growth and things like that. If that can, if that's the cause, then we'll go out there and try to open that up. But the long and short of it is to try to then look at what the proposal or the, the three possibilities are and then sit with the state and see exactly what they might um, uh, be amenable to, considering the fact that it's, it's an intersection with a state road. So we have to take into consideration their concerns as well.
So it's my understanding that actually something has already been submitted to the state and.
We, we sent it to them for review. Yeah, we just have to then sit, meet with them and say, this is what we'd like. The, the third option was basically offsetting the uh, the intersections to try to increase the queue length. It's about the best we can do there without the, it, it doesn't warrant a stop sign and it doesn't warrant a stoplight. So they're not going to allow either um, at that, at that intersection. It's, it's, it's in essence, creating stoppage on their road. So they have to say yes. We're responsible for our road as it intersects theirs, but they're responsible for their road and they won't allow us to put a stop sign or, or a stoplight. So now it's how do we address our roads intersecting their um, their road itself? And the only thought is to, to try to separate them somewhat. And then allow a right-hand turn off of Canoe or off of Carter to then queue up to make a left-hand turn at that point in time onto uh, onto Canoe Hill. Because that seems to be the hardest turning movement. The rest of it seems to be okay. You know, taking the right-hand turn out, the right-hand turns on either side seem to be okay. A left-hand turn is a little problematic coming out of, out of Carter onto one oh six, but there are other ways to get around that. One of the thoughts was to try to have anyone who was going to make, make a, uh, go down down Charter Oak to come around and come up. Um, I'm sorry, Clapperton Hill to come down and round up one oh six. So that you don't have to take left-hand turn or cross, you come up. So it would be, instead of you would, you would uh, have all the traffic come down Clapperton Hill onto one oh six, make a turn onto one oh six, and then you can then proceed with a left-hand turn onto, onto Canoe Hill or proceed onto a straight up one oh six itself at that point and, and basically bypass the intersection. So that, the other thought is to put signage at um, Clapperton Hill saying alternative route, right? So that will get people to go down Clapperton Hill. That's a, that's an alternative, but that also has to be, the consideration has to be given that will be adding traffic to Clapperton Hill. And that necessarily isn't a, uh, you know, it's a steep embankment, it's a steep hill. It's got a couple of, you know, one hard turn in it. So it's not necessarily a, a, a home run, so to speak.
I mean, the issue is going north on Carter. And then trying to get onto Canoe Hill because they, I don't think a lot of cars are going to go north on Carter and, and take a left because you wouldn't. It's not the quickest way. It's kind of counterintuitive. You're going north and then you're going to go south.
Well, that's the problem is that it is counterintuitive. If you try to bypass traffic, it's counterintuitive. People are not going to do it. They want the straightest line. And the straightest line obviously is going straight across the street, which is the hardest movement, right? Is to try to go from Carter to Canoe, right? Second hardest movement would probably be taking a left-hand turn from Carter out to one oh six if you're one of the residents that live in close by. So we are looking at, at that point, like I said, separating the intersection is just um, quite involved at that point.
Just to give a relative, if you say, look, in the next three months, we'll have it all evaluated and is that a fair?
That's a fair statement. Yeah. Evaluate is a fair statement.
Evaluate and, and, and recommend and, okay.
Yeah, at that point, I would have to go to a further design and then I would have to go through the state process of, of, and what we would need is an encroachment permit because we would be working inside there right away. That encroachment permit process can be quite lengthy at times. So an evaluation within three months is, that's a, that's a fair statement.
Okay. And then getting it done.
That, well, we were speaking earlier about, you know, that, that comes down to, to workload as far as both on our end and on the state's end. We just had, we just had a comments that we sent to the state on a separate project and we were told that comments of this nature, please note that it takes at least four weeks. So at least four weeks, you know, so that, that's a, you know, that gives you an idea of uh, of workload for all the agencies involved.
Well, we'll stay on it.
All right.
That's.
No, I'm sure you will.
Together we will.
Unfortunately, there's only so much we can do because of this state road.
Well, but, but I agree with that. And that's why you still have to look for, you know, sort of local solutions, not depending on the state. I mean, we've got to do some, something about that. Because, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Anything else, Ken?
Um, I just had one other, and, and that's just as we think about um, the next phase for ARPA funds and we think about the full program of ARPA, I wonder if we are also considering that um, either on a semi-annual basis or an annual uh, basis, we look at, at what was the impact of that investment by ARPA funds into some of these projects and just did they, did they achieve their stated goals? And I'm not suggesting it necessarily be an audit, but rather just a, a, a report back, if you will, by um, those who received the funds from ARPA that, you know, they, they were um, utilized with their full intention and they uh, satisfied what we had set out to uh, to fund.
Yeah, as you know, um, we're working with the community foundation on the nonprofit piece and part of the work that the community foundation does outside of the ARPA, they do a lot of that. So we're using sort of their, their.
Due diligence.
Their process of how to vet them all. And then, as you say, we'd like to see something uh, on the other end. And I think that will be something that we would require on the town side too for the, the initiatives that we funded as well.
Perfect.
Have we, do we publicize on our website, the, I should, I should get on a website. Look, do we publicize the ARPA funding that's been approved?
Well, it's on, I mean, every, the board of selectmen, you know, you all approved the last round.
No, I know. I'm talking about for the town, people of the town.
So that, they're in the minutes for those meetings. Um, the, you know, it's, it's summer and flow, right? You go to the board of selectmen, then you have to wait for the town council, the board of finance and the town council. But the next round, if you will, will be uh, for the nonprofits. We expect to come back in early May. Um, the community foundation committee does on that. And then you know that there is a joint meeting of the board of finance and the town council on Monday, April twenty-fifth to further vet and discuss the playhouse initiative and the powerhouse project. So those two items were set aside even after board of selectmen approval, just because board of finance and town council had some more questions. So we decided to have a, a meeting dedicated just to those two projects.
And that's April twenty-fifth?
April twenty-fifth at seven PM in this room.
Seven PM. Great.
For both, both of the projects.
Playhouse and powerhouse. Correct.
Super.
Um.
That's all I had.
Okay. I would just say, I'd mentioned the uh, the legal spend on the ethics uh, issue or in my opinion, non-issue. Uh, I would encourage our legislative branch to revisit um, that ordinance because I think it's flawed. Uh, and I'm also concerned about the potential for impartiality or, or non, uh, for partiality with respect to uh, to some of the folks on that commission. Um, that's all I have.
There, there are actually two.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about one in particular, but need not get into that. Um, that's all I have. Um, the, the next exec, uh, scheduled executive session, approval of a recommendation from the police commission to grant officer Jeffrey Lambert additional sick time in accordance with article nineteen of the labor agreement. We will move to go into executive session. Do you have a second? And we, we like uh, Chief Kolikowski.
Officer Lambert.
Yeah, he's, he's under, I think, Deborah.
DeTulio, exactly. So you just have to give me a minute. Excited to move.
Okay, and Tucker, you're invited to stay.
Yes, and we will reconvene as soon as we're out. So if anybody wants to stay in the weight room, they can join us when we come out.
Okay.
You guys have to just give me a minute.
Give you two.
Two.
Hey, chief.
So I'm going to make a motion that uh, we approve the recommendation from the police commission to grant officer Jeffrey Lambert additional sick time in accordance with article nineteen of the labor agreement.
Second here.
All those in favor, say aye.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
I move to uh, adjourn.
And I'll second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Take care.